I'd like to call to order the Smyrna Planning Commission for July 2018. At this time, we'd ask everyone to stand for a prayer and pledge, please.
Father, we come to you this afternoon, Lord. We just thank you for all the blessings that we have here in our town, Lord. And we also thank you for a safe and prosperous Independence Day celebration here in town that the citizens could come out and enjoy, and the fact that we can celebrate independence and the birth of our nation. Father, we thank those that have served our country, those that have given the sacrifice of themselves and their families, just being away sometimes from one another, that we can enjoy the freedoms that we do. Go with us as we deliberate the business of the community and help us make wise decisions. We ask it in your name. Amen.
No citizens' comments at this time?
That's correct.
I'd like to take this time to introduce one of, I guess, our town's newest employees, Brian Hercules. If you'd stand up, please. We appreciate you being here. Brian will be the new town manager. We appreciate what Mr. Gill has done for us, and we look forward to working with Brian, and thank you for being here. Next, we'll move on to approval of the minutes. Do we have any corrections or additions to the minutes as they were handed out?
I move to approve the minutes.
Have a motion to have a second?
Second.
A motion, second. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye. opposed, motion carried. Moving on to item number five, new business rezoning request, Asbury-Hawn Way. Staff comments?
This is a rezoning request. It has frontage on Asbury-Hawn Way. It also has rock frontage on Nissan Drive. Any development access would be through the frontage road to the rear at Asbury-Hawn. It's currently zoned C2. It's about ninety-six hundredths of an acre. Shrouding zoning is all C2 on this side of Nissan Drive. Across the street is Nissan, which is zoned I3. Land use plan would support commercial development in this area. The request is for a PCD, planned commercial development, and they're asking for specifically a car wash, which is as an automotive service and repair facility. When we changed our zoning ordinance and created the C5 district, automotive service and repair was included as a use, no longer allowed in C2, but allowed in C5. And so when we... Car washes are included in that use classification under our zoning ordinance. Later on in your agenda, we do have a potential or proposed zoning ordinance amendment that would change the text of that, that would make some changes to that. But the buyer of this property did want to go ahead and move forward with this request as well, and so they have requested this. We did include, they have the site plan they have already worked on that shows the layout as well as the architectural elevations, which show what they are proposing to do. It is a completely brick-and-glass-type structure, completely enclosed, automatic car wash is what they are proposing to do. So this lot would not actually even be qualified for the C5 district since it's not an acre. So it's almost, but it's not quite an acre. So that's why this was the only option for them, really, for this specific piece of property to move forward, so, at this time.
And since later on, the staff is recommending that we allow this in C2 anyway, you certainly don't have any issues with this?
No, I do not.
All right. Any other questions? We have a recommendation for the rezoning. Only four of us. We don't have to speak up. Or do you have questions?
I think I have a question or two regarding this.
All right.
I see the front elevation would probably face Nissan Boulevard, correct? So ingress and egress, if you drive by Smith Brothers on a busy day down here behind Town Hall, there's cars in the road. So I'm just a little concerned about...
Blocking the road.
Blocking the road.
Yeah, this would be what they're proposing. There's, of course, there's several parking spaces, but you would have, their access would actually be from Asbury-Hawn. You have, they're sharing an access with the adjoining parcel as far as their direct access. And then within, you have, gosh, I don't know what this... How much room? You got three lanes, and you do have about eighty feet or so times three lanes of stacking area before they ever go into the car wash. And then when you come out, you've got quite a bit of room as you come out and go back out to that shared driveway. So I mean, I think, I think you've got plenty of room there for them to be able to be contained on the property.
How many cars can be stacked up in those three lanes?
What, eighty feet? At twenty feet per car, that's four times, that's twelve.
Twelve in each lane or total?
Twelve total, before in each lane with an eighty foot.
And so when that gets full, where are they going?
They would go, they would then curve back out.
Into the road.
And into, you got another sixty or eighty feet there.
On the side of the building.
On the side, no, I'm talking, this is on the back. This is going back, curving back out toward, going to the access point. And then you got the access there off of Asbury-Hawn. So you have another, that's really, you got room for sixteen cars before you ever get to the access drive that runs in between this lot and the adjoining lot.
I guess more along the lines that he was talking about is after this lane gets full, they're going to be out on Asbury-Hawn Way.
I mean, you could, I guess, there is potential for that, you know, Friday, or a day after a snowstorm or something, and everybody trying to get their salt washed off.
I mean, Smith Brothers is off the beaten path, and there's probably fifteen or sixteen cars in there between where they enter and where they back up to the street, and they're back to the street all the time.
Yeah, I mean, this is, this is a concept plan. It could be changed, certainly, to further address what your concerns are. That's what they've shown at this time, is room for roughly sixteen cars.
I mean, aesthetically, it's a nice-looking, it's a nice-looking business, but I'm a little concerned about that traffic backup. And I guess a little bit of, I think we're trying to tweak a zone to get it to fit in here. That's a little uncomfortable for me, too. Everything around it's C2, and because this doesn't currently at least meet the ordinance, and it's not big enough of a lot for a C5 zone.
Right.
It's kind of like, there's two reasons right there why it really doesn't fit here unless they go to a...
To the PUD.
To a PUD.
Right.
What size lot is this?
Point nine-six, was it?
Yeah, point nine-six.
So it's four hundredths.
From an ordinance perspective, it's a little shy, but it's almost there.
Four hundredths.
I understand. I'm just saying from an ordinance side that it's causing them to bring it in as a, as a PUD. And not so much that, but the traffic situation concerns me a little bit. Where would the front actually face? The one with the business name on it? I probably got it in here. Where would the front actually face?
I think it's probably, you have, you have the left exterior elevation and the right exterior elevation. It's going to be...
I mean, the front looks like this...
It'll be that right, what they're showing on the plan is the right exterior elevation.
Well, when it says front, we don't know which is the front, do we? I mean, is it Asbury-Hawn or Nissan? Which is the front?
Well, their access will be Asbury-Hawn. The front of the building is, what they're showing is, would be, what they're showing on the elevations they've given us, it says right exterior elevation.
Yeah.
That's, that's the front of the building.
That's the part that will face where?
That will face Nissan Drive.
It doesn't look like it on the plan, though. Looks like it's turned sideways. Looks like the small, short side of the building there.
Yeah, the short side of the building, that's what I'm saying.
Is going to face Nissan.
Yeah, the short side of the building will, yeah, and that's what's in that, on the plan says right exterior elevation. Because you're going to have, and then you've got the canopy that's going to stick out the back, that if you look, it says front exterior elevation, which has the name of the business on it. That's, that will face, if you're staying in Nissan Drive, it'll face the left.
So you're basically going to have two doors and a garage door facing Nissan.
Right. Correct. And one door in the garage, with the roll-up on the Asbury-Hawn side.
Would this be, this be facing Nissan?
Yes.
That's it? This would be facing to the right of that?
Yeah, the, the business name of how they got it laid out is facing, actually, if you're in Nissan Drive, it would be to the left.
And then the left exterior elevation would actually face Asbury-Hawn, correct?
Correct.
Correct.
It's a mirror of the other side.
Correct.
Well, no, it's actually one less door.
Yes, there's one less door. Yeah, it's very similar. And then the other side would be the side with all the windows, all the windows.
I assume it's similar to projects like at Needham.
Similar type of use, too.
Except this takes the cars around, it has probably, what, ten times the stacking space that that...
Yeah, because one on Needham is pretty much, you come off of Needham.
Needham and straight into it, and it's two lanes.
Yeah.
Where this, when you're going all the way around the building and then three lanes. But it's, it's that type of operation, I assume.
Yeah, it's a fully automated, yeah, there's no self, it's fully automated car wash. You kind of pull up and it pulls you through it.
Sure. But the point is, it's got, I don't know if it would be, you've got a lot more stacking space with this than what you would, than what is existing on that one.
On that specific one.
And it can be a little issue from time to time, but you don't have near the stacking spaces at this.
What, what is currently where the C2 is, the lot beside that? Is it from the restaurants?
You got, get the Heritage, you got the Credit Union out there, you've got Steg and Shake under construction.
That's probably what's...
Two or three other restaurants through there.
Taco Bell.
Taco Bell, and then you go south, you've got the gas station. If you go south of Kent Hill, then you've got restaurants and Tire Place and a few other things down through there.
What's the wishes of the commission?
Just me personally, I don't see it as a good fit there, so I'm going to make a motion to deny the rezon.
No second? We have a motion to not recommend the rezoning to council. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
opposed? I vote no. to C4. Staff comments?
Yeah, this is a rezoning request. It's at 10259 Old Nashville Highway. It's currently zoned R1. It's about 4.6 acres of land. Shrouding zoning is a mix of R1, C2, C4, as well as the Lennox PUD. The land use plan would support a medium-density, single-family residential in this area. We, this is just for zoning at this point. We don't have any proposed use or layout or anything like that. There is a house and accessory buildings on the property currently, but there's no proposed use or anything at this time. And I guess that's all I got.
Okay, questions?
There's no proposed use, so we really don't have an idea as to why the request is for a C4 zone, do we?
No, I know at one time they did mention something about storage-type uses, and that, we told them that would be more of an industrial zone, and so they kind of went away from that. They did mention, you know, office or medical-type uses, but, I mean, I think this is the owner of the property. I don't know that he's looking to develop it necessarily. He's looking more to sell it, would be my guess. I don't know that for sure, but...
Is the owner here?
Yes.
Is it? If you come forward, give us your name, please, sir.
Hi, this is Mike, Jim Maynard, and I own the property there on Old Nashville Highway. And the reason I'm trying to get it zoned, I had some folks looking at saying, well, what can we get it zoned for? And I really couldn't tell anybody anything. So I thought, if I go and get it zoned, and I do sell it, then I say, okay, it's already been zoned and going by the guidelines of the C4 guidelines, that's what would be proposed, what would be going there. It wouldn't be, a matter of fact, one thing was, if I looked at, I don't know, a few weeks ago, and he wanted like, he has an online business, but he would be putting a warehouse there, but it's a parts house, but everything is, nothing's sold to the public there, it's, you know, it's online. And I said, I don't know how that would go. And that was one of the things right there. He said, well, if he couldn't put that there and probably live behind it or whatever, then he probably wouldn't be interested in it. So I thought, well, I'll just come forward to the council and see what, where I stand on it.
All right. Do y'all have any questions? Thank you, sir.
Yes.
C4, that's our most restrictive commercial.
As far as commercial, yeah. We have the P and O zone, that's more restrictive than that. As far as the commercial, it allows office-type uses. It would allow for, you know, smaller retail-type uses, restaurants that would not have a drive-through window. It would not allow any kind of, you know, gas stations or fast-food retail or any of the more intensive commercial-type uses.
What's the wishes of the commission?
What's, what's behind the PUD between those four acres and the PUD that's on two sides?
Is that the VFW?
Yes. On the other side of the PUD is the VFW. On the, kind of where that, the angle that's kind of cuts into this parcel is the church there, and that's C4. And you've got the school on the other side of that.
I'm talking about on the left side of the PUD that runs along Avery Park on the left side, and Alteris over there.
That's the Lennox developed, that's the Lennox. That's all single-family primarily. There's some duplexes.
Right, is there any barrier between the two? I guess we're all getting at.
Oh, well, there's some trees there now. Any development on this would require buffer, certainly, because that's all single, pretty much all single-family, or with some townhouses.
Had a site plan, especially with commercial use, that's when you would establish your buffer. And I guess we've got, what, three different levels now?
Actually, it's four.
Or four.
I mean, it fronts the Old Nashville Highway, so that, in a sense, creates a little need for it to be a public service type of thing. You've got C4 next door, which that, I guess the only, I think I would have preferred Mr. Maynard to have brought something to us when he knew what it was going to be, instead of trying to speculate what you might need there, because it could, you got a question? Are you mine, chairman?
Yes, sir.
The reason I'm doing this, like, sitting, like speculating, but everybody that I've talked to, they just stop right there because we're not going, they don't want to go through it, say, okay, and we'll get turned down. And I said, well, I'll take it and see what I, see what, see really what it is. And a fellow across the street there, it's, has that, I think Romeo's Auto Repair Shop, he had looked at it one time, wanting to get out of that building and build a new on the other side of the street.
And that wouldn't meet your C4 zone, and that's the, that's the question, really.
Which is the good thing.
Exactly, because you have to be concerned for the neighbors that surround that parcel right there, you know? It fronts the old highway, so obviously something eventually will come in there.
And, and the reason it's zoned R1 is because that's what everything comes in at.
Right.
Unless there is a specific request these days.
But auto repair or anything like that wouldn't fit your C4 request.
Wouldn't fit C4, right.
Okay, so, so what is, is zoned over there on the, where he's located?
He was probably grandfathered in.
He's C2. He's now grandfathered, but it's C2 across the street. Well, some of it is. You also have some R1 across the street also, but...
And then the plumbing shop's next door, I think, to him, so...
Sazars.
Yeah, he's C2. He's C2 also.
How would the C5, would a C5 affect that now, Kevin?
Well, his grandfather, the Romeo's...
I mean, they were C2 back in the day.
Right.
Would that be different if they were to move their business across onto this parcel?
Yeah, they would have to be C5.
Yeah.
But that's possible, though, if he wanted to do that, that's...
He could always request rezoning, certainly.
But then he's back, if you have a buyer, then he's back to the same thing he's at right now.
Yeah, that's what I'm getting at. I'm just trying to get an open path, get an open path there where I'd say, look, this is C4.
He'd be coming in and asking for a rezon yet again if that's the purpose behind his, his purchase. And whether they would, whether it would pass planning commission or not, we don't know, but he, he's right back to where you are right now with a buyer, saying, well, I can't get it through. But if it's that type of business, he'd have to come back anyway, based on this zone request.
But if it's anything that's written on the paper that I've got saying this is all zone four, like I said, office space or whatever...
Yeah, and that's what this zone...
Right, well, it shouldn't be a problem there. If I tell someone, look, you know, you can put office space here, or whatever's in the contract of the paper.
Right, Kevin gave you what fits the ordinance.
Yeah, I've got that, and I looked at it and everything. That's what I'm saying, but...
But just so you'll know, if, if that were to change, and they wanted to put auto parts or auto business, or, then it would require another zoning request, so...
So I really shouldn't even be here right now, right?
Well, I'm not saying that. You get every, no, we're glad to have you, Mr. Maynard, but come in.
I'm sure I'm saying, I won't, am I going to know anymore when I leave here as I do when I got here?
Depends on who wants to buy the property.
Yeah, then that's what...
Yes, sir, I think you'll know a whole lot more. One way or the other, I think you're going to know a whole lot more. But thank you again, please.
Thank you, Mr. Maynard.
You know, here's the deal. What do we want to encourage or not encourage being there? It's not going to be R1, single-family houses.
Not on the old highways, no.
And it probably wouldn't be anything that is a single-family thing. You, I'd say we could have requests for multifamily, which I'd rather have a C4.
I agree.
And...
No doubt. Is that what's across the street that's...
Across the street is a mix of C2 and R1.
And most of that was... It's coming, it's not built yet. Well...
Everything, everything across the street is built.
Everything's built.
Well, it's, it's down the street then, beside where the trailer park is, that whole piece of property.
Oh, that's, that's some townhouses and single-family next, next to Chicken Pie.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Or close to Chicken Pie.
No, I agree with, I agree with Ed. It's, it's probably the most restrictive commercial product we could put there, but...
The other thing I see is, as more housing is developed in that area, you know, Chicken Pie, Lennox, everything, folks are going to need more services.
And just want to be attentive to the people that are wrapped by that, that live, and that'll come later, site plan and buffers and that kind of lighting and all that kind of thing. But I know that anytime you see a, a request for rezoned sign go up, it's a red flag for a lot of people that live in there, and we get that. So providing whatever happens here, those people need to know that's going to be addressed at some point later anyway.
With any kind of site plan.
With any kind of site plan, yeah.
All right. What's the wishes of the commission?
I move to approve the rezon based on staff comments.
We have a second?
A second.
Okay. We have a motion to recommend this rezoning. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. This will now go to the city council, which requires two more readings on that, sir.
All right.
Item number three, Rocky Fork Town Homes. Staff comments?
Yeah, this is a rezoning request. Property's currently zoned R1 to, to re- rezon to a PUD. It's two parcels of land totaling 12.61 acres. The proposed PUD is a mix of ninety-nine, up to ninety-nine townhouses and along with two commercial lots. Shrouding zoning is R1 and R3. The land use plan would support a mix of office, retail, multifamily residential in this area. The pattern book was included as a part of your packet, as well as, we have it in front of you tonight. Again, it's ninety-nine. Townhomes are proposed. The access for those would be from, from Rocky Fork Road, which this is, of course, the town is in the process of doing improvements to that, as well as extension of Enan Springs Road over to that area, and so that this would all, eventually would all be Enan Springs Road West, and they would need to coordinate. Obviously, their, this development would have to coordinate with those road improvements. But anyway, the access for the townhouses would be there. There's two commercial lots proposed that would be kind of between the townhouse development and the Big Sun Lane and Percival Street, which are two other roads that do cross and front these properties. And those, those commercial lots are being proposed to be utilized C2 as their, as far as uses and setbacks and, and that type of thing. There's no specific uses there at this time, but we'd be proposing to use C2 guidelines. We had a few comments that are, they, they are proposing primarily vinyl-type, or at least the minimum would be vinyl, townhomes with some brick on the front. We did recommend concrete siding instead of the vinyl. We had a few comments regarding, well, one regarding stormwater management easement being shown, and then just asking to contact HDR, who's our consultant, to incorporate those, the widening plans into the project. We also had a comment regarding sitting areas. There are, we don't have an actual specific square footage shown, but there are, it does appear like they are meeting those requirements as far as amenities they're required to have for the multifamily use. We'll look at that much more closely once we get into the site plan stage, if this is approved, so. And developers are here, if you have any questions, and I think that's all that I've got.
What questions? I'll have a staff or the developer.
This appears to be far enough off the 24 interchange, right? It wouldn't, wouldn't be something we need to concern ourselves with now with the future interchange.
Correct.
Potential there.
Correct.
What about the school and how, have you heard from any of the adjacent property owners there?
We have not this time, no.
Development this size, Kevin, is there anything in our, I guess, covenants that say they need a rear exit? I mean, there's only one way in and one way out for this whole development? I'm thinking about traffic flow and fire and...
Yeah, there's a, I can't remember what, there is a fire code that wasn't, that's part of our review, the fire department and the codes department are both involved, and none of them, neither one made a mention of...
Had any concerns about one?
...the requirement of another entrance. So from a fire code standpoint, they are proposing... Requirement of another entrance, uh, so from a fire code standpoint. They are proposing, which I think is good, they are proposing a pedestrian access back to the road behind, so if there are people living in here who are, who are students of those schools, they would be able to walk to the middle school.
Do you think that's sufficient access as far as, for, for the schools?
I mean, it will, if they are going to be in a car or on a bus, they will have to come around, uh.
Yeah, they have to come out on, they'll have to come out on Enan Springs and then come back on Enan Springs to get there.
I mean, I, it would be, I don't know, I don't want to speak for them, but it'd be a fairly easy, it's such, it's very close to that road, the Percival Street, which is in behind, it'd be a pretty easy connection to make.
Yeah, right now, the only way in and out is Rocky Fork.
Is there a reason to do it or a reason not to do it?
Well, I mean, the reason to do it, obviously it provides more access in and out for people going to the school. The reason not to do it, I'm assuming is they would, they may want it from a security, these are private streets, and I don't know if there's some security reason that they're looking at gating it or anything like that, but they might just speak to that.
In, in the morning with school traffic, do you think they're going to be able to get out of here? Because that, school traffic can get very heavy in the morning and afternoons, getting in, and if they're fairly close to the entrance of the school there, they start, if they have any, anything wrong, it could block, block them from getting out without a rear.
I think, you know, by the time this project, if it's approved, and gets through the development process and actually, you begin having folks living here, um, we will be underway with the road improvements, that'll help with that situation.
Is the road going to widen? Does it show it on here, getting back into that property?
At this area, is, is this a road widening here, or I mean, or is this? For the, for this section, is it a three-lane section here, is that what?
There's very little shelter.
Yeah.
None out there now, so.
Right.
Through this section of Rocky Fork, we bought 111 feet of rideaway for it to be five lanes eventually. But what we'll have in the meantime will be two lanes with a center turn lane, and then there will also be a right turn lane off of Rocky Fork onto Big Sun.
So you would, you would have a, a center turn lane.
Do their setbacks on this plan show that?
Yes, yeah, I, when I, one of the comments I gave was to coordinate with the, uh, guys doing the roadway design, and they incorporated that.
So they wouldn't put something in and it'd be torn back out or vice versa?
Right, because they're accommodating the new right of way on this concept plan.
That's still a lot of traffic in a small area coming out of there.
And there's no plan for a signal at the intersection of Big Sun and Rocky Fork.
There's not one?
There's not one, in our, in the road widening project, there's not one.
With three schools being there, doesn't, it's not going to need a signal?
It's two schools, uh, you know, at this time, you know, if, what they had planned to do is, from my understanding, what they planned to do, and too bad Trey's not here to talk about it, is have a crossing guard person at the intersection of Big Sun and Rocky Fork to direct traffic, uh, through there to get people in and out, and then also, I think, further in. Then, once the R, the project you see is R3 to the left-hand side, that intersection of Percival and Big Sun, they'd have another person there directing traffic.
For school in the morning.
Another question concerning the fire protection that, that we're talking about. Where, I guess you're coming down to the clubhouse, where you got the parking area? Can the fire department negotiate? Usually there's, uh, there's usually some kind of question concerning radiuses where.
They, they did on the other two, they've got that, they've got kind of a hammerhead kind of thing on one side, and then the cul-de-sac on the one, they didn't there. I don't, they probably couldn't if there's cars in that parking area.
I guess I was surprised that that comment wasn't there.
Yeah, again, they were, they were part of our review, they didn't mention that specifically, no. We did, we did ask them, and they did add the one on the, I guess that would be the southwest side there where the hammerhead, they did add, which would allow for a turn, you have to pull up, back up and pull back out, but at least you could turn around.
Kevin, you said they were proposing doing vinyl, but you all recommended doing.
We did recommend the concrete siding, which is what we. Yeah.
That and brick.
Well, they had, they're showing masonry on the, well, 25% on the front.
Because they're going to be very, very visible from all angles, from the school, from Rocky Fork.
Probably more visible from Percival than from any other place.
Yeah, 25% masonry, 75% on the front, and the siding rear would be the vinyl, all vinyl. We recommended the, the concrete siding, but that's for discussion if you all want to look at something else. So we recommended.
So the concrete siding would take the vinyls?
That's what we, based on our recommendation, yeah, but you all, if you all want to talk to them about that.
But I think we'd certainly address the rear with the way this is laid out, if anything. Yes, sir? Please give us your name, address, please, sir.
My name's Kevin Atwood, my address is in Williamson County, but I work for the developer.
Okay.
The reason that we are proposing the vinyl siding is because of the price point we're trying to reach in this, uh, in this, our target market is, is first-time home buyers, uh, single moms and that type of market. And so, with construction costs escalating the way they have the last year, we're trying to hold the price points at an affordable point for, for first-time buyers.
Okay, y'all have questions?
I, I understand that, but we want a good product out there too, because it's going to be very visible to anybody taking their kids to the school. We want something that's going to last, you know, long-term last as well.
Right.
So, uh, that was, that was my concern.
We're also proposing a buffer along Percival there on the backs of all of those to try to, all, as well as provide screening from the school, you know, it works both ways, to give them some kind of privacy on their backyards.
Now, the, the tie-in back on Percival for the, uh, I guess it's a sidewalk access back there. If there's not a crossing guard or anybody back there, those kids just at their own, or whoever at their own to get across that street. I mean, if they're going to walk from that complex to school, um, is there, are we going to, city going to require a crosswalk or anything to tie that in, Kevin? Because if not.
They would have to put a crosswalk in, I don't know about a, sort of a guard or anything, crossing guard, certainly it would have to, anytime you have a sidewalk that ties into a public street like that, you'd have to.
Because there will eventually be a three schools out there, so.
My understanding is only going to be the two, uh.
Even with two. Then you've got younger kids.
Yeah, it's the middle and they're building the elementary.
Okay.
Yeah, I, my, unless they buy more land, there's not room for.
I just misspoke on the three.
So along with this, they're wanting the other two parcels commercial to be C2?
Yeah, as part of the PUD, they would be, would be governed by the C2 district, as far as uses and setbacks and all that.
Would that, could that be a market? Maybe not sell gas, but a market?
Well, it could be, with C2, it could be a market, it would sell gas. Or any other, well, pretty big variety of uses in C2, not every, C5 is the highway commercial now.
C4 is the more restricted.
C4 is more restricted, yeah.
What kind of setbacks are they showing from Percival? Right here. The building, setback.
Going within the commercial.
Too long.
I was looking at the commercial.
Yeah, no, I was looking at the, at the building.
Um, looks like approximately 25 feet going by the dash, I'm assuming is the property line on this concept drawing.
It'd be like a front setback across of the street.
Well, they're showing, as far as the PUD request, is 25 feet. Typically, if, if, on a straight zoning, you would have, like, if you were zoned R6, you would have a 35 feet.
How much?
35. But they're, as part of their PUD, they are requesting, like I said, it scales, I'm just scaling it on the drawing, about 25 feet.
Will there be fenced patios?
Uh, they didn't say one way or the other, I don't think, in their plan, typically do.
Will there be fenced patios behind the, the backs where the storage is?
Eventually, user is proposing on some of the units just having fences come out straight, but they wouldn't be enclosed. And so, in between each property to have a fence.
Privacy between each.
Privacy between.
But nothing along the back.
But nothing along the back.
So there's, there's no fencing around the stormwater retention?
Uh, there. Nathan Nelson, I'm a civil engineer for Alcon Properties. We, I mean, we can certainly accommodate fencing around the stormwater pond. We'd make sure that all the engineering stormwater pond would, uh, be in line with the zoning.
Because your description more or less describes it as a wet retention pond, which means it's normally going to be water in it.
Yes, there'd be a small portion that would have water, that'd be near the, uh, deeper end, but I mean.
Kevin, the, the proposed playground, 9,900 square feet, is that ample enough? I mean, what, what was the cutoff, remind me, what was the cutoff, was it 100 units or more?
Yeah, 100 units or more.
That required two?
Well, no, the playground's required no matter what, at 100 square feet per unit, and you have the, more of this passive open space.
Anything that was 100 units or more required us?
Requires two additional things.
Right, so is that why we're seeing 99 units proposed?
That's my assumption.
I'm just, I'm asking.
Yeah, I don't know that, but, uh, I would assume that, we, that's not the first time we've seen units. When there's, when there's, if, if you can't get to the 200 or 300, 200 or 300 unit number, you know, to where it makes more financial sense, I guess, to make those other amenity, uh, investments, I guess that's where, where we come in.
What about the design of the cul-de-sac? That looks a little unusual. Is, is there a reason for that?
He's talking, I mean, I would say, it's, it's fairly, it's cul-de-sac part of the straightforward, they do have the trash compactor kind of in that area, but.
Here where it comes out.
I mean, you do, it's kind of, it's not completely, it's more of a, what they call the teardrop or whatever, where you, you're more angled to one side.
There's a side street coming off of that.
Is that the compactor or is that the trash?
That's the trash.
That's the trash compactor, yeah, that's the trash compactor.
If I could, if I look at my big map, I could see that, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I agree with Mike, I think the, uh, the appearance of it, especially in this location, is going to matter to us. With the, uh, the activity of the school there, running, running up and down that road all the time. Chairman asked about the clubhouse, is that anything that we need to address if we move forward from a, a turn radius perspective? Fire hall is okay with that parking lot there?
Well, they didn't mention it one way or the other, I think, and it's actually just a pavilion, it's not an actual clubhouse.
Okay.
That's really part of one of their amenities, uh, and it's really kind of guest parking, that's just some additional parking. They're providing a garage and at least one space in a driveway for the units, and that's just extra parking. I mean, we could certainly, if this is approved, we could look at it, review it again with, when the actual site plan comes in.
But if, if you've got a fire down in one of these, on C Street at the end, before you get there, that fire truck's going to have to back out.
The way it's designed right now, yeah, for those five buildings.
The other two, you know, coming in, they can hit either one of those turnarounds and get out of there. This one, you're, where you go in is where you've got to come out, especially in a fire truck.
And again, like I said, if we could, that's certainly something we could look at again, when, you know, if it's as approved, when the site plan is submitted, they can review all that again, because this is not for, this is just a concept at this point, for, for zoning purposes.
He has a lot of site plan to come if he's moved forward, I'd say, but.
Yeah.
Would we have the opportunity to address whether or not we, we wanted an access, a, a second access to Percival? Or does that need to be addressed now?
I think you can, that's probably, that's a layout tweak that could be made, I mean, I think we probably could. I think you do need to, if you want, if you're concerned about the appearance or whatever, you probably do need to address that. Because that is a condition for their, uh, what they're requesting is regarding the, the use and materials they're proposing to utilize. You know, vinyl's not something we, we allow under design review, so.
Based on previous, uh, uh, the way we've looked at these projects in the past, I would assume we're going to be looking at the, the masonry product required, uh, all the way around these because of the, the perk, the.
And what you could do, instead of saying concrete siding, is you could say, district say would be required, would be required to meet design review, and then they can have, they can kind of pick and choose what they want to, you know, if you tell them they got to do concrete siding and they want to do something else, I don't think you want necessarily bind them to that.
Vinyl is no longer accepted in design review?
Vinyl, vinyl's not allowed in design review, right. Hasn't been for quite some time.
I don't think that could break it. I don't know, I still am concerned about a sec, a secondary access enforcing anybody driving to have to come out on Enan Springs. It seems.
Well, if you would like, if you, I mean, you certainly make it a condition of the approval that there'd be a second access, and again, they tweak their layout to make that work to where it makes sense, not necessarily requiring it in one specific location necessarily, we could look at.
We certainly wouldn't want it lined up with A Street, because that would encourage people to cut through.
Right.
But somewhere down through there, I could see, and, and I don't know where without looking at the school layout to see, and, uh.
Well, it looks like the back, the cul-de-sac, that thunderstorm lane just about lines up with the back of that property. It's pretty close to it.
Yeah.
According to what we're looking at here, I don't know how close that is. So you could potentially go out the back and have it lined straight up with the other, with the school lane.
Right, which that, Thunderstorm is a private street, but it, it certainly, still, this would be a private street also, so you could certainly do that, that'd be a good option.
I'm, I'm personally a little concerned about the commercial, the C2, not knowing what future there, because once it's on the C2, they can put a gas station or, or it's, I think it's a very, too wide of a spectrum, knowing where it's at, uh, out there at the school as well. I've got some concerns about that, not knowing what future use could, could be, especially with C2. C2 is the, the least restrictive of all of them.
Well, I mean, it won't be zoned.
Excuse me?
Sorry.
Give your name, place and address.
Sorry, Nathan Nelson, I'm with Civil Infrastructure Associates, civil engineer for Alcon Properties, the developer. Well, I mean, the, this commercial lots won't be zoned C2 per se, I mean, we'll be under those, it'll be zoned PUD, and they'll have to meet or go through his design review, that's, as. review, that's, as we spelled out in the booklet, that the, uh, commercial lots, whenever they could be.
All right, as far, as far as your PUD, then what uses are you proposing being allowed there?
They would fall, they would fall under, uh, we were advised by the staff, instead of proposing just some specific uses, because the developer had their preferred ideas, but in order to be less restrictive and allow more possibilities, he, they.
But if you want us to approve a PUD, then you have to tell us what uses are you proposing for that area.
And he basically is proposing all, anything that's allowed.
Anything that's C two.
Right.
That's what's being proposed.
Right, right, and I did recommend that to him, cause they had listed two or three things, I just, for their sake, I said, if you may wanna look at something more broad, just because if something comes along that's not on that list of one or two or three items, you gotta come back through this whole process again.
And I don't have a problem with that, it's just we need to know what we are recommending or not recommending.
And it's C two, that's what they requested, because the use, one of the uses they did talk about was a, a gas station. C four might be a better fit, the C four wouldn't allow that, so.
I mean, we're all.
Request what you're asking for, you need to request C two, so.
You know, sometimes with a PUD, it lists all of C two with the exception of.
Right.
This, this, and this.
We've heard that before, yeah.
Just trying to clarify what the, what the request was.
Right.
Kevin, if they came in with a, a PUD request instead of C two.
It is a PUD.
Well, and it is, so that, that leaves it kinda wide open for really just site plan control more than anything, doesn't it?
Well, from a standpoint, from a use standpoint, it's allowed anything in C two, and my main concern too was, if you have these separate commercial lots, you know, when a site plan comes in, if it's not governed by the PUD, it's what the setbacks are, you don't have anything to really go by, and so that's why I said, the easiest thing for them, the most simple thing for them would be to pick a zone and, and say you, everything you want, everything allowed in that zone, as well as setbacks, building heights, all those kinda things, it's gonna be governed by designer view regardless, from a landscaping and architectural standpoint.
We're just talking about a use perspective.
Right, yeah, this is, basically, what we're talking about from a C two standpoint is setbacks, height, and uses, is really, and block coverage.
The small piece of property that's between those two commercial lots and Big Sun Lane, is it part of this development, or is that part of county?
That's, that is actually, believe it or not, that was when the, when the, uh, school board recorded their plat, that actually is now owned by the town, uh, cause when, they, they recorded right away, and that little triangular piece, there were some discussion at some point about the city looking at, uh, potential fire station in that area, and anyway, they, that was what they, they gave it to the town, so we, that triangular piece, we, is actually owned by the town.
Town is marked, okay.
Yeah.
What size is that?
I don't know, maybe half an acre, I don't know if it's that big.
Okay. Are you okay with the reduced setback off of Percival rather than requiring what would normally be, uh, a, a front setback off of a road like that?
I, I think, I mean, I think twenty-five is, is, is probably, that probably would be okay, cause there's some zones, we even have a twenty-five foot front setback, we'll learn some, so, I'm okay with the setback on that side.
That's right. Okay. Other questions, y'all have?
One quick one, I, I know your, uh, the book they've given us, has the typical front town home building elevation.
Right.
Typical, does that mean this is what they're planning to build, or do we know that yet?
Yes.
Okay.
That's what they're proposing.
So, they're all garage units?
Single family, all, all have one car garages, yes.
We're seeing a little bit of a problem now with density and short driveways and parking in the street.
Yeah, and they do have, they are set back far enough where there's room in the driveway.
For stacking.
For, for stacking as well as the one car garage.
Other questions? Do we have a motion? Have other issues you wanna talk about?
I think for now, all we're looking to do is give them a zoning request, and we've got some site plan stuff to work out, at what point, if we were to move forward, do we need to list the requirements that Mike mentioned for another ingress egress on Percival? These, the design review product, would that be now, or would that come later?
I think since it's a PUD, uh.
Yeah, I think he was, yeah, I mean, we had comment number four on our list, you could just amend that to say that the units, all buildings would be required to meet design review, uh, and then adding a comment regarding, again, numbers six and seven have really been addressed, and I really feel like number five has been addressed as well, but you may wanna add a comment that they, uh, as a part of the review, that they would, uh, would be required to have a secondary access, and then they can come back and we can review that with the site plan, and have that as a condition of the, the PUD approval, if that's what you're looking to do, to recommend to council.
Well, I heard, I heard Mark ask about the detention area, the wet detention area, I've asked about whether or not we should look at having some screened patios on the back of these, especially, I know they talked about fencing the robe and not fencing the back, and, um, quite honestly, there's not a lot of storage in these places, and people use their garages and they use their patios, so if we're not careful, we're gonna, even with screening along the back, we're gonna have a lot of visibility of people who don't have a place to put much other stuff, so I would like to at least propose that. And then the other is, what the chairman asked about is the, uh, turnaround ratio down by the, uh, pavilion, that needs to be researched, do you?
And the commercial uses.
And the commercial uses.
All right.
That, I don't know if that's a form of a motion, but I tried.
Well, uh, is it a form of a motion, or is it a request that we look at this next month with some of those questions answered?
I'd prefer that, honestly, I think.
And, and we try to give them, and, and.
Give them an opportunity to.
Give them a list of the things we really wanna.
Yeah.
Wanna see addressed. So, I think that's, one, we list what, what we want, two, we approve it or deny it as is, or, three, I, I think this is also something that we could consider, uh, deferring till next month, and ask that those, those things be addressed further.
And I think if, uh, we wanna be friendly to the development and community out there, but I think I'd prefer that, as I'm trying to make a motion, potentially getting a yes or a no on it at this point, so I will make the motion to defer for the next meeting.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And we will defer, and, and quite honestly, I think we're gonna need to have those questions answered before it goes to council, uh, and, and they have to act on it, so, uh, if, if y'all will get with staff and address those issues that you first discussed, we would appreciate that. Okay, under new business, item number four, Richard Tune, rezoning request, R one to R three, staff comments.
This is a request that, uh, for forty-three point three acres, currently zoned R one to be rezoned to R three, uh, the surrounding zoning is all R three, and the land use plan would support medium density, single family residential in this area, so R three would certainly be consistent with that, this is a piece of property that you all looked at a few months ago, and that request was ultimately withdrawn before council had passed it on second reading, and so, uh, that was a different applicant, that was a buyer, or a potential buyer, that, uh, did withdraw that, and so now the, uh, the actual owners of the property have brought this before you, this property does have, uh, kind of four roads that have been stubbed into it, two, two ends of Williamsport Drive, Bonifay Drive, and then, um, High Ridge Court, I believe it's High Ridge Court or Drive, so, um, but, so it doesn't have a specific address, but it does have four roads that have been stubbed into it, and so.
So, I said the topography would allow for those roads to be, to access this property.
It's, it's, it's part of the stuff, this is a steep piece of property, certainly, uh, but certainly the Williamsport Drive, uh, both ends of that could, could be connected, and then, you know, coming in from High Ridge, we, we would make some sense on the, kinda on the, cause there's a cover of ridge that goes through the middle, and you could kinda develop two sides, really, in a way, but, uh, anyway, that, they've requested this time, we don't have a plan or anything like that, this is just for R three zoning at this point.
It fits the neighborhood, though.
It does.
Questions?
No questions, but I'll, a comment or two, because the last time this came to us, I know that we, from a council perspective, received quite a bit of information from people that live in the area, that they were told that that was gonna be apartments and town homes, and, and we had to do a lot of dispelling of that, so if anybody's paying attention, this is the same request for the same zone that they live in, that they currently live in all around it, so it's R three, which is single family residential, I just wanna make that clear, if, if anybody's watching, cause, boy, we sure got some calls and some emails about that, and, and, uh, somebody started the rumor that, yeah, they're getting ready to throw a bunch of town homes and apartments up there on the hill, and so, I wanted to clarify that now before we even go any further, because, uh, I had, we, I called a lot of people back to explain that, so.
Okay, well said. Do I have a motion?
I'll move to approve.
Have a second.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carried. New business, item B, preliminary plats, Cedar Hills subdivision.
Now, this is a phase two of Cedar Hills subdivision, uh, it's part of the Cedar Hills PRD, it's twenty-five point one two acres, eighty-eight lots are proposed, um, we had, uh, four standard comments which would need to remain, we had four comments under our, for the grading plan, we did receive quite a bit of the information that, that, but we just haven't, we just received it, so it hasn't been reviewed yet, so we would wanna keep those, and then we had three comments under staff comments, uh, regarding the, they wanna show the size of the utility lines, to number the lots continuously, and then, uh, regarding their typical lot layout, had easements shown for all the land area outside of the building envelope, which was not needed, so, um, all three of those comments under our staff comments have been addressed, so, um, this is a continuation of the PRD, it is consistent with the approved, uh, PRD, is from, from a zoning standpoint, this is, part of this area is still, um, a part of the, uh, the water line upgrade that they're working through with C U D, for, for a fire flow standpoint, and so, they do show, there is a boundary line, and those lots that are above that elevation, uh, we would, would not bring, would not recommend a final plat be approved until that, uh, water line upgrade is up, is finished, cause we don't wanna, uh, can't approve, uh, any lots or any homes being built there, so, but there is, part of this section would be underneath that, so they could, uh, build in that area, um, so, now, under, my understanding is that water line upgrade is underway, but it is not complete yet, so. Yes.
Under the grading comments, item number one. That's not necessarily, that hasn't necessarily been a standard comment.
No, it's, it's a part of the grading plan review, it's not a.
To provide.
I think they've addressed that, but, um, I'm, probably indicated they'd address it, I haven't reviewed it, but. I mean, I, I mean, I guess what?
Well, I just haven't seen it on.
I know, we, I think it's.
I think the only time I've ever seen it was when it was in, like, a flood area or something, where, where we required, uh, a finished floor elevation. I mean, do we care what it is, or?
I think it's primarily, we've had some, some issues where homes are, are, and Tom can correct me if I'm wrong, where they've been, where we've had some issues with some stormwater and, and ditches that overflow and get into people's homes and things like that, and I think that was just mainly to be sure that they've looked at it, to be sure it meets a certain elevation that they're above.
What do we, what do, what do we require on that, then?
I don't know if there's a specific.
What, what, what are you asking for us to require?
Like Kevin had mentioned, uh, there've been some issues in the past where homes were built, uh, lower than they should have been, because there's no plan for the contractor to follow as far as how high to make it in relation to where the ditch is, uh, and requiring minimum finished floor elevation, so that they can indicate the elevation of the ditch, I make them do, uh, storm, um, I make them do ditch calculations, show how high stormwater can be in the ditch, and then in relation to where the finished floor elevation of the building is, to make sure that the, that water doesn't flood up underneath the building, and, again, in crawl space or possible living space.
But that hadn't been on our, on our plats before.
I've, I've, actually, they've been on some plats here recently.
Yeah, we, we've, this isn't the first time that's been a comment, but, it's not on this specifically to the plat, I mean, it would be on the final plat.
It can go on the grading plans, it don't necessarily have to go on the, the plats themselves, but it would just, it was a comment I put on there.
Are they required to furnish anything after the house is finished, before a CO is issued?
No, they'll get a, during the construction process, they'll have a surveyor come out there, and they'll indicate what the finished floor elevation is, and submit that to the building codes department.
So, we are, you're saying that we will require a surveyor to go out there and furnish you a finished floor elevation?
It is not a formal certification or anything like that that they provide, just to check to make sure that the finished floor is approximately the correct elevation it's supposed to be.
See, I'm not aware of that being part of our regs where we've ever required that, except in areas where there have been floodplain issues, that's the only time I remember that's requiring it, is that wrong or right?
As far as what our sub regs require, I think it's probably right, I think this.
Does, do our sub regs require that they furnish something from a surveyor to show our finished floor elevation before a CO is issued?
I think the zoning ordinance is what actually requires it on the, for, that's where our floodplain requirements are, we're talking about the floodplain.
Is that what this is, is a floodplain requirement or an elevation requirement?
There's not a floodplain here, no.
Right, and, and.
Right, and that's where I hadn't, and I hadn't seen it unless it has been.
Well, and you mentioned the ditch, if there's a, is that a parallel ditch, a, a ditch that runs across the property in some way?
A lot of, a lot of subdivisions like this may have like a ditch in the backyard and behind the lots, where water goes in between them.
This indicates that we're doing it for each lot?
Right.
Yes, it is.
So, is that just the ditch lots, or each lot? So is that just the ditch lots or each lot?
I've just been requiring for each of the lots to make sure that it's at the right elevation. And also in places where, maybe not necessarily for this particular project, but in places where you have extremely steep slope conditions, where they have very narrow lots and you have a house staggered one right next to the other, just to make sure that they think about it ahead of time, that they look at what the elevation should be on each home to make sure that each one of them's elevated so that they can build one to the next.
But if we approve it like this, you can require a survey, a surveyor to furnish you something on, on each and every single finished floor elevation. Is that correct?
And I'm not requiring that, no. I mean, it's when we come through that. I'm sorry, what?
But, but that's what it says. Indicate a finished floor elevation for each lot.
Who would do that other than the surveyor, Tom?
Well, the design engineer will go out. The design engineers putting the grading plans together would indicate what the finished floor elevation would be. And then ultimately, as they build them out, they have a surveyor who could come down and check the elevations to make sure that it's...
Well, that's exactly what I said. You are requiring somebody to go out and check the finished floor elevation.
To check it, but not a formal certification, like was mentioned earlier.
But we've never done that before.
Okay.
Have we? On everything? Why, why would it be on this subdivision and not on every subdivision?
I'm, that's a comment that I'm putting on grading plans that come in, just asking with the finished floor elevation. Like I said, especially in steep slope conditions or to prevent problems like we've had in the past.
Have you seen it before?
I don't recall it. That's not to say it hasn't been there before. I'm not, I'm not disputing what Tom said. But my, my question is, I guess, we, you know, because there are certain lots that are affected by a ditch, we're asking for the whole neighborhood to be surveyed. And that, that's a concern, because that adds expense in a lot of places. Specifically to the homeowner that's purchasing it. So I'm thinking about them as well, so. Every little bit matters, you know, the yield. So if we're, we're going to blanket, if we're going to blanket cover a subdivision by comment where each lot might not even pertain to needing that, I think we're just kind of, we're putting a blanket on it's what we're doing here. It says for each lot, not any affected lot, but for each lot.
Each lot, yes. Now, I have seen it on, we have seen it where, where there's certain lots that have been identified that we need a finished floor elevation. Certainly have seen those.
Right.
I have seen that many times. What I have not seen is where it's required for an entire subdivision.
Okay.
And I don't know that our regs allow us to do that.
Well, I don't know, again, specifically in the subregs, again, we don't really talk about it other than the floodplain and then, and of course, obviously, we have, most of our floodplain ordinance is actually within the zoning ordinance.
Yeah.
It applies to everything, not just a subdivision, so. If I have anything else to add to that.
Okay.
I guess I can...
There may be some concern, because there's a pretty steep drop-off from up here in the top left-hand corner going down. It's going from a hundred and forty-five down to a hundred and twenty-seven.
But as long as that hundred and twenty-seven's not in, what difference does it make?
Right.
Okay. What's the wishes of a commission?
I have a question. Maybe I missed it. In the middle of the drawing, you have something called the water elevation line?
Yeah, that's the, the elevation above that line of those, that's the lots. The higher the elevation, which is, if you're looking at the plans to the left, they don't, they can't have, until that water line upgrade is made, they don't have adequate fire flow. So it's the only lots that would be to the right of that line that they can actually, you know, develop at this point or actually build on. So if they ever...
Since this is a preliminary plat, it, it involves all those lots. But the final would only involve those that are, that can be served.
Until they get that water line upgraded.
Until they, they get that water line.
As I said, it's my understanding that that is underway, but it's not complete yet, so.
Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve, but with comment one under grading comments. I'd like to see that read differently to pertain to only lots affected by the drainage ditch.
We have a motion. We'll have a second.
Second.
Any other discussion? And that would be something that would be addressed after that, when we, when we see the final plat, correct? If there's anything to address.
Right.
All right. We have a motion. We'll have a second. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carried. Moving on, under preliminary plats, Olive Branch Subdivision, Section One, Lee Road, staff comments.
This is Section One of Olive Branch Subdivision. This is one that has, was originally proposed about eleven years ago and never went beyond the zoning stage and has recently been amended to include some additional properties and not other properties, some property, took some in and added some. So, so this is the first section of this overall PRD. This section is thirty-two point three-seven acres, eighty-five lots are proposed. Access would be off of Lee Road. We had several comments under standard comments, most of those coming from CUD, so we would need to keep those. We had a couple of comments under the staff comments. This area is, there's a proposal to extend sewer up the Olive, a gravity sewer up the Olive Branch Basin. We were, the council is in the middle of kind of discussing that project. And so this product, property would be served by that sewer main. They are showing on their drawings to utilize the Montgomery, the pump station that's at the corner of Lee Road and Montgomery Way that was built as part of Woodmont. That pump station is, would require upgrades and quite a bit of work to actually, to take on more, more development. And so we, you know, we had, had, had recommended or had a comment that they would tie into the Olive Branch trunk line. Their, their plans do show using the pump station. I think their, I think their idea, thinking on that is that would only be a temporary thing that they would tie into the main once it is in. It's our goal, and that's from a staff standpoint, is if the council moves forward with this, that it would be, be there really before they would, and we were talking with the developer. They said they would work with us on the timing some too. So that the sewer main would be there before they would need it, so, or at the same time, maybe. Comment number two was regarding fire hydrants. They, they have added those to the plans. We do think they still need to add one to cover, there's an area of kind of the Piedmont Court area of that street. I think they do need to add one to kind of cover that area from what we could find, so. It's consistent with the, the approved PRD as far as the road layout and all that, so. I guess that's all that I got.
So how do we address the sewer thing? Or, this is preliminary, correct?
This is preliminary plat, right.
So can we not address it and leave it open to be addressed with the final? Or, but we wouldn't want anybody starting until...
Well, they could certainly, I mean, I think they're, they might could start work at some point as far as putting in the roads and all that. But we certainly don't want them, or we would hope they wouldn't put in, assuming this pump station usage, because our goal is to, at least from a staff standpoint, council still has to vote on this. But our goal is to have the gravity main to serve this area.
Do away with the pump station.
Do away with about four lift stations that we could completely eliminate.
I, I understand all that, but I don't know how, we either going to approve this with using the pump station or we'll prove it that you can't use the pump station and you, and you have to wait on the, on the sewer main to get out there, or is there another way to address it? Where, where are we headed on this?
I don't know. That's, that's the only way you can put, get sewer to it. I mean, it's one of those two options. And the sewer, using the lift station, it involves upgrading that station. It involves upgrading the gravity, once you get it up the hill. The gravity main is going from the top of the hill down to Rock Springs. I mean, it's a pretty major project.
What's the timeframe for the gravity to get out there to do away with the pump? Because if you update, upgrade the pump station, take care of this, then you're going to shut it down and have the gravity in there anyway.
Right.
So you spent money that you don't need to be spending for a half two years.
Yeah, yeah. If the council gives a go-ahead, I mean, we're, we're ready to start work from it to do the design and buy the easements that are necessary and all that, so. But obviously, that, buying easements could take, go quickly or not. I mean, you really don't know too...
We've had quite a bit of discussion on this, the council has. And Mike has been very helpful in explaining how the, of course, it's a big benefit here, but it's also a big expense. So, you know, Brian is just coming on. Some of the things we're wanting to do is make sure that, and this is going to be his budget. And we want to make sure that he has some, going forward, some additional knowledge and get his input on it. You know, it's a, it's a big ticket item. We're doing the water treatment facility out there and expanding that, wastewater, and we're expanding that. And so that can, this can be people that tie back into that and give us some return on what that's costing to do. So there's a lot of moving parts to this, and that's why we're kind of...
We're going to be discussing it Tuesday night, council meeting, so.
Kevin, is there a, this might not be the exact place, but I know somewhere along Lee Road out here in this general vicinity, there's a stormwater issue that usually shows up every time we have a really big rain. Is this going to add to it, or are you familiar with it?
I'm, I know there, I don't know the specifics. I know there is an issue. I don't know all this. This, this will be designed to meet all our detention requirements, so that this will not take... If there is, it won't make the issue any worse. I don't know, it's not going to fix the problem, but it would not make it any exacerbated at all.
And so what benefit to, to the, the trunk is what he said, getting rid of some lift stations that cost money in maintenance and labor, and, I mean, a lot of that is in the mix too. I, I agree with you though, chairman. What do you, how do you, how do you skin the cat, you know?
Normally, the way things work, once we approve something on a preliminary, quite often the people... Quite often, they'll go ahead and start to work, building the subdivision. So it's either going to be built based on using a pump station or based on using the...
Using the gravity sewer, this.
That's not there.
Not there yet.
That's not there.
And I think this is a contingency, I mean, I think they, they prefer a gravity sewer, but...
Well, I think everybody does. Y'all understand the benefit of that.
I think they're, they bought the property and are looking to develop it. We've annexed it, zoned it for them to develop it. I think this is a contingency for them to, if the sewer, the trunk main doesn't get built, the only option they got is the pump station.
If that is acceptable to staff, will that work? Are, are, is staff okay with that?
A contingency of, that this would be a contingency upon, you know, that assuming that a gravity sewer is not constructed. I mean, I think...
Yeah, I assume there has to be some kind of timelines on some of this stuff.
Right. I mean, we're, a year and a half to two years is our estimation on having a sewer line there. Again, that depends a whole lot on how quickly can we obtain the easements that are necessary and how quickly can we get, how quickly can the contractor work? We're looking at, maybe we bid it in three different sections and have three contractors working at the same time or whatever. We talked about different things that might can be done to expedite getting the line done more quickly.
But if you're talking about a year, let's just say you can cut it down to a year.
At best.
At best. They're already going to have some of these built. They're already going to have to have sewer tied in. Then, then you're, you're building a line and then you got to turn that up, break what you've already got that you're fixing to do away with. So I think it's a lot of added cost to the city, because those pumps, I know are not cheap.
No.
Nothing you do.
A good developer would be doing it.
Yeah, but it's, it's still...
Well, the flip side is exactly what Ed said. They, they can wait for, potentially wait for gravity. Or as, as a standalone development, if we didn't even have the conversation of gravity now even showing up out there.
Would we approve it?
That, that's the question. So it's kind of like, either way, would we approve it with the lift stations and all that in, in question?
I mean, I think if we weren't talking about a sewer main, I think, I mean, it's in the city.
Right.
You know, I mean...
And that's my point. So I think they have a right to develop it one way or the other. That's my point. And so it, it's kind of up to them whether they want to wait for it or not, I would assume, whoever this, you know.
In my opinion...
Depending on our approval.
Well, exactly. But depending on approval, but...
But, but the way this is presented, it's not an option.
That's right.
You know, isn't that the way I read it?
Well, because...
That the recommendation is we approve it...
They would tie into the trunk line, yes.
Yes. Yes, sir.
Um, with what we have on the books right now, with what it all has been approved, Woodmont is at capacity. So if they did not wait on the gravity and hit Woodmont Station, it would be on the developer to upgrade the station and also the lines coming out of that station going back and hitting Rock Springs, okay? We would prefer, obviously, they wait for the gravity, which we're moving forward with the blessing of the council with design and right of way. But with what all has already been approved, Woodmont's at capacity.
So the only way, if the gravity was, was not part of this discussion, then the, the requirement would be the pump station and the line improvement.
Correct.
So that's the two options.
Correct.
We could approve it with the pump station and the line improvements or the, like the gravity flow. And I assume part of that would be is when gravity is, is available, you tie on to it.
Right. You know, not only would the developer be upgrading Woodmont and the lines, they would have to put their own pump station on their property to pump it to Woodmont. So it's a lot of additional cost for the developer there, which, and again, I, I agree. My understanding is they want to wait for the gravity and... My understanding is they want to wait for the gravity, and we are moving forward, so...
If they wanna wait on it, I'm not, not seeing why this is a rush tonight, I guess. That's my question. If they wanna wait on it. Because we're, we're in the co, we're in the conference right now as a council, if we're gonna do this or not going forward. And it seems to me if waiting's what their option is, what would, what's the rush in doing something?
That's my...
Well, then we could approve it only with tying on to the gravity.
They could write back.
We're at the same place. And if...
My understanding is he's just wanting to kind of get the ball rolling, so he, when he's ready, when, assuming council moves forward with the project, that he can kind of, he's already got the ball. He's got the approval from planning commission. He can start the ball rolling when he's ready to go instead of having to come back to you all, I guess.
And my guess is this is gonna go to council, and this same conversation's gonna be beat up pretty good at council, and so...
Is this a pod?
No, this is preliminary.
This is preliminary plat.
Then go to council.
This won't go to council.
If and when we have...
Well, no, this, the plat doesn't go to council.
Oh, you're right. You're right. It's preliminary. I'm sorry. No, but if, if it makes it through the approval process, how does that look?
What was the request?
The request?
From the, how is it presented? With the pump station or...
Using the pump station. I mean, with the idea that that's a contingency plan, that we would, to use the pump station either temporarily or, I would say the council doesn't move forward with the truck main, it would be a permanent thing, but it would be a temporary thing, or contingent on if we get it appro, if, maybe there's a six months or a year timeline, and, you know, that we have, we use it temporarily or, and then tie on to the gravity at that point. You know, it's, it is a lot of added expense to do that. Developer and their representatives are here if you want to talk to them.
Someone with the developer wish to speak on this? Please give us your name and address.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I'm Steve Steele with Huddleston Steel Engineering. I live at 408 Division here in Smyrna. We, we understand and we agree that the trunk sewer is the best solution to this issue. The people that I'm working for have owned this property for some time. We actually brought it last month, and it was withdrawn.
Yes.
We'd like to see this move forward, and what we'd like to do is have the, the opportunity, if the trunk sewer, for whatever reason, is not built, that we would have the opportunity to utilize the pumping station and the force main to serve this property. But if the force main is made available, then we understand and we'd have every intention and would tie on to that force main. And this would be become, I mean, tie on to that, I said force main, to that trunk line. And this would be part of that assessment district or whatever is set up to pay for that trunk sewer.
So essentially, what you're saying is you're willing to, to do it one way or the other. Everybody prefers the gravity, and also when it's available to tie on to it at that time.
That's correct.
Which would keep the comment that it must be tied on to the trunk line, but it doesn't eliminate the possibility of using the pump station and the improvements required with it to, if it's not available at the time.
Right.
And when it is available, we would eliminate that pump station.
You know, I might offer, that language could be modified to say that we would tie to that trunk line when available, and in the interim, if we choose, we could put in the pumping station as a temporary measure.
And the improvements that's required.
I would say in accordance with previous discussions and agreements that have been made about how that would be paid for.
Staff okay with that?
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think that'll work.
Yeah. I might suggest if you're gonna make, someone make some motion that you, what I want to be clear is the developer will attach to gravity sewer upon installation to include abatement of existing pump station, because we want to make sure that that's taken care of in case they do. You wouldn't want to have several of them on the pump station, then they've built some more, then everybody's going on the gravity from those. So we're not having to maintain the pump station after.
How do we feel about that?
Honestly, a little uneasy. Just... I'm still trying to grasp really what the, if the whole wish is to wait for the gravity, why this is such a rush right now, when we're in the middle of talking about whether we're gonna have gravity or not in, in the near future, so.
Is there room on this site, Steve, for the pumping station? Where would it go?
I assume it's shown on here.
It is shown.
It's shown on here.
The pump station that would be added to, to pump up to the Woodmont Station is shown.
It's, it's down near the creek. We don't quite get to the creek with this phase, but right down at the end there, we would install a temporary pumping station, because that's where we would tie on to the trunk sewer. So we want everything to flow to that point.
That'd be on the Lee Road end?
No, it's at the, it's at the creek, more in the middle of the property. It would be, if you're looking at the plat, it would be kind of a, kind of toward the bottom left-hand side.
Okay. Developers' request is to use the pump station and express the willingness to tie, and it will tie on to the, to the gravity system when available. Staff recommended we only approve it with it tied on to the, to the gravity. Is that correct? Is that pretty, did I say that right?
Yeah, that, that was our recommendation. We had, I mean, we had some other wording that might work. I mean, I think we'd be away with, I guess, with that contingency since there is a, the council hasn't formally decided to move forward with the project too. So, I mean, I think the developer does have a little bit of, I don't understand where he's coming from. He wants to cover all his bases, so.
Yeah, I think the rub, which hadn't been spoken about yet, Mike, he can comment if he, if I stated wrong. But there's been some issues of just disagreements about who would be responsible for upsizing those lines at the pump station if you had to go down Montgomery Way. So I think that was one, one concern. There is a disagreement about who would be responsible for those improvements. So that, that's one of the reasons I'm sure the staff had put in the recommendation to only be per the, per the gravity. But as I stated, if you so choose to, to do otherwise, I would just recommend that if you make the gravity sewer as a, as soon as it's installed as a prerequisite, I'd also like to include the abatement of the pump station connection if, if they are using it and decide to use it.
All right. Is it? Is it our responsibility to identify what has to be upgraded or not upgraded? Or do we have a...
No, I was just giving you background of that's...
Yeah, well, I understand that, but is that a staff and developer discussion? Or is that a planning commission decision or...
That would happen at the administration level, yes. I was just giving you background of that's, that's where that came from, as I'm sure, I didn't write that, but I'm sure that's where it came from as far as why they're suggesting the, the gravity, so that they didn't have the issue of, of Montgomery Way improvements or tearing up the road there.
Because it's a pretty major, to upgrade the line, the pump station's major enough, and then the sewer main is all within the built roadway, so you gotta completely tear up the road to, you know, upsize the line. So it's a major issue from a neighborhood standpoint, fire response standpoint, all those kind of things. So we're just trying to avoid that.
Will our approval one way or the other affect that negotiation between administration and developer?
I'd say that if you approve it only for the trunk line, I'd say that it would not. That if you allow both, if they decide to use the, the pump station, then it could, that's where then, that's where the disagreement could come in, because then it will be who pays for the, the upside. Does that make sense?
Yeah, but I still don't know how to take action on it.
Steve, since you kind of represent these, who this is, is there any, is there a rush to find something out tonight?
Mark, I don't know that I can answer that. I don't know.
I'm, I'm thinking if a defer would be in...
Well, and, and, you know, you as a body have that right to defer anyway. You could defer from one meeting.
We're trying to be...
And I understand that. I know, we're, we're not trying to put you, this body, in a difficult position. We're just wanting to move ahead.
Yeah, I understand.
Well, I think part of the issue is this, a tie on to a main is requiring something that has, hasn't even been approved to, to actually do. And...
It's a little hard to require, yeah.
That's, that's, that's where I'm having some issues, is how do we require something when we have no control over if or when that's ever gonna be done? Neither do they.
True.
I think, I mean, obviously, you could defer, or you could approve it to tie it on when it's available. And then some wording that Jeff had recommended, that could be an option too.
But if we did that, doesn't it get into the issue you were talking about, about upsizing the lines? Is responsible for that?
It could. That's part of administration.
Does that affect that negotiation any at all with, with us approving it that way? Or that is still a negotiated deal between the administration and the developer? See, I don't know that we've ever truly addressed that in the past either.
Right. It's not really even a negotiated deal. There's just a disagreement about, about that. So...
Disagreement.
I disagree.
Right, right. So, you know, at, at the end of the day, I'm sure they're gonna, they would make the same argument if they were not allowed to go, go to the pump station. They would probably still try to use the same argument, I would assume, that they have a right to use that pump station based on the information that they, they state that they have. So I think to, to get where you're wanting to go, Mr. Chairman, obviously, I think that you could probably handle that by doing the, what we originally talked about, by just making it, as soon as it's available, attach on to it, and if you choose to, to use the pump station, that you can do so now.
That's legal recommendation at this point, correct?
If, if, if you're wanting to offer both, that's my, that's my recommendation. If you're wanting to offer both. If you're wanting to make it only gravity sewer, then, then I would go with the staff's recommendation on it.
Which is in effect saying you can't do anything right now. I mean, you can go do it at your own risk, but you really can't do anything right now.
Correct. And the developer, I just didn't want to state, the developer's been very proactive. It's been in favor of this, describing. He's worked with the administration some.
You're okay with what you said. So can we change, can we change?
Change one to reflect two. Comment number one to reflect what...
What council said.
...said, sure.
How do you feel about that?
Ultimately, the developer's gonna be able to do something one way or another with approval. And I'm not trying to hold them up at all. I'm just stuck where you were with the whole idea of approving it based on tying to a trunk line, and we don't even have the go-ahead for a trunk line yet. So that's what's making me feel uneasy about that. But I prefer that we had the trunk line, and I prefer that, I'm sure they do too, of doing it that way.
Yeah. They can build a pump station, and six months later...
That's a lot of cost to them to...
Here's the deal, and this is the way it's gonna be. They're gonna get started. And at some point in time, they're gonna see if the city has started or not started, or what kind of timeframe there is, if there is any timeframe with it. At that point in time, they decide to either build the pump station or wait. But right now, we don't know what kind of timeframe that is. I mean, we're talking about a year and a half to two years, but, but we're talking about something that hasn't even been approved. And that's the problem I have, because essentially, if you're saying you, we approve it subject to tying on, we have pretty much declared a moratorium on, on the whole area. And I don't know that that's, that, that we have that prerogative, but I think that's what we're doing. When somebody else comes in, you, how, how do you do anything different?
Right. You wouldn't, you wouldn't approve it that way, yeah.
And that's kind of why I mentioned, what's the rush? I mean, you know, we may know something in 30 days or 60 days. I don't know.
Well, it was through it last month.
Right.
And I, and I don't know that we've accomplished it since last month. So I, I, I think they have a right.
Well, I'm sure they do, but I, I'm just saying there's been a lot of discussion. There's a lot of study. It's a big project for the city, and it costs $6 million or so dollars.
Well, here's the deal. If they go ahead and start, even if they build it, you know that this is gonna tie on. It doesn't change anything with the city.
That's my point. That's why, you know, are they gonna start tomorrow is my question. We might know more.
I don't know if they will, but they can.
Right. Well, we might know more in a month. That's my point. Seems like they'd prefer to know more as well as we would.
Sure.
And so it just clarifies a lot of the questions that are being asked right now. Of course, they can do what they want. I get that as far as starting the lift station, but...
Do I have a question with what kind of comments?
One question?
Yes.
If, if we approve it and they put the pump station in, they put the lift in, and then city brings their line in to tie into it, who incurs that cost on tying in? City?
It's really not that, it's already there.
Yeah, well, and council's recommended that they pay for the abatement as well, right?
Right. Well, that statement was developer will attach gravity sewer upon installation to include abatement of any existing use of pump station.
In other words, if the sewer fee is higher, because this is a special assessment, more than what it is today, they would pick up the difference?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
All right. Have a motion.
I don't know what kind of motion to make, so I'm just going to make one that we defer this for the next meeting.
Motion's made to defer. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
All right.
Stone Trace, Section 1, preliminary plat.
This is a preliminary plat for some 12, or 22.1 acres, seven lots in the C2 zones at the corner of Old Nashville Highway and Sam Ridley Parkway. We had several standard comments and grading comments there. We had three comments under staff comments, we would need to keep number one under that, regarding utility sizes. Number two, we had recommended no direct access to Old Nashville Highway for many of the lots, they have requested that that be kind of looked at on a site plan, at each time, kind of with a site plan, when those come in for those lots.
And that would only affect Lot 1, right?
It only affects Lot 1, because that's the only lot within this development, everything else is reserved on the backside.
How far does the fence go, T-Dot, have that, they'll have it restricted a certain distance?
I think, I think if you look at the right of way, I think it angles back, there's 70 feet or something, I'm not exactly sure where the fence ends, but I'm assuming it's probably right there at that, or at that angle where it comes down to Old Nashville.
Lot 1 has no access to Old Nashville Highway.
That was our recommendation.
Okay. Can we, can we clarify that to say Lot 1?
Yeah, because that's the only lot that has fronted on Old Nashville, so we can serve it for this plat. And I'm going to clarify comment number three. In reviewing this, that was my comment, and in reviewing it, the plat, or the master plan, I was looking at the master plan, and it was showing a scale of 1 to 50, and it's actually 1 to 100. So I scaled it with, as using 1 to 50. So that's why I said regarding 650 feet, it's actually about 1,200, a little over 1,200 feet from Old Nashville Highway to Milestone Trace. So that was my mistake, and I will admit to that. The other thing was regarding, they are actually not proposing signalization at Needham Drive, and so that was a, so, one thing that has, is shown, that the new access at Milestone Trace, which, these are, it's a public street, there's actually not a median opening on Sam Ridley Parkway at that location at this time. So that's actually what had to be something T-Dot's going to have to provide an approval on, we can't approve that, so. But they are proposing, as part of this overall development, we did have a traffic study that was submitted to us, there would be signalization of Sam Ridley at the new entrance at Milestone Trace, and signalization of Old Nashville Highway and Genie Lane, as well as quite a bit of improvements in Old Nashville Highway, and different, other traffic improvements, quite a bit of other traffic improvements as well. And it's kind of staged a little bit as it, as the development actually occurs. So, this is a change, this has been approved before by the planning commission, this is a change in the layout, in adding this other entrance in off of Sam Ridley Parkway. It works better from a spacing standpoint, for signalization, also does provide, you know, there's potential for, to be able to provide some access to the adjoining property to the east there when it develops, a direct access, but you could develop off of it as well, so. But essentially, it's only looking at the seven lots, basically between, extending Genie Lane, and then between that and Sam Ridley Parkway, is the only area that's being platted at this point, so. So that clarifies comment number three, so we can, that can basically be taken off, so...
All right, taking off three?
Yeah. So, I think that's all that I had.
Number two, specifically, reference to Lot 1.
Correct.
The sidewalk to intersection of Sam Ridley and Old Nashville Highway, does that go through the limited access part? How do we do that?
Yeah, it wouldn't go through the limited access, as far as that, it would be on state right of way.
Can we do that?
I think, I mean, yeah, it's public right of way, I mean, I think the, eventually, our thinking, I guess, was eventually you'd have the, potentially have a crosswalk, potentially, I guess, or crosswalk across Old Nashville Highway, but...
What, so where are you, where do you want it?
To the, to the intersection, what the comment says. About 100 and 160 feet, can you believe that?
From Genie to...
Well, it's already, they're already showing it from Genie along Lot 1.
Yeah, but are you talking about from Genie to Sam Ridley?
No, from where they're already showing the sidewalk ending to Sam Ridley is approximately 160 feet or so, that's why I was, what the comment was asking for.
Y'all have questions?
Whenever they're going to start, that's what, that's my question.
Yes, sir. Please give your name.
My name's Wendell Miller, I'm with Prime Commercial Realty, and I'm representing the Waldron family on this project. I live in Murfreesboro, Tennessee, at 2520 River Road. And I've been working on this, and Mr. Chairman, the one comment about the no access on that Lot 1 from the Old Nashville Highway, we would like for you to be able to really consider that, how Lot 1 is accessed in totality, when they, when the, we're, we have a convenience store under contract for that corner, and how their access and everything works with, because basically, it's going to be coming from the backside of Genie Lane, and how close that intersection will, will fit, you know, between where their building is, the gas pumps, how traffic is circulated in and around that convenience store and off of Genie Lane, because we realize we're probably going to have to push back off of it a little bit, and they may want to be able to get a right in only off of Old Nashville Highway. Because, for one thing that we're doing is, is if you see in the traffic design that we have, it's going to be eliminating those long slip lanes on each side, because that's the new thing that traffic engineers have come up with, that those slip lanes don't work as well as what they thought they would when they designed them, so, you know, they'll be taking those off, so it'll actually be putting more distance between Genie Lane and where you would actually come off of Sam Ridley Parkway. But anyway, we would, we would prefer, if we, if you, in the approval process, if you guys decide to approve this, that we could take that comment and let that comment be for site plan approval, so that you can see the entirety of how that convenience store traffic and everything's going to work.
So you're requesting a right in only on Lot 1?
That's what we think's going to be coming, and because of the distance, that they're going to have to move their, their entry off of Old Nashville Highway back along Genie Lane, and how it's going to work around their building, because it's kind of like, anyway, it kind of creates an awkward situation for the people that are doing the right hand, right hand, and then they got to loop back so hard to get back in there. And so, when they finish their site plan, anyway, we'd just like for you to be able to consider that access off of Old Nashville Highway at site plan approval stage.
Kevin, y'all have any issue with that?
I mean, I think, you know, I don't know, if you don't want to tie up the plat at all, you could just remove the comment, I guess, I mean, I think...
Well, no, I think we're...
Yeah.
I wouldn't want to see people coming out trying to make a laugh.
No.
No, and we know that, and they wouldn't either, yeah.
And I think even coming out and taking a right would be tough.
Yeah.
Right, but a right in, kind of...
As long as you got enough...
Not a right out, but only a right in.
Only a right in, basically...
As long as you got enough room for folks, they're making that right turn, they can get completely out of traffic before they make the right turn and all that, I mean, I think that's...
Which we could address at the site plan, then.
Right.
You have any issues with that?
No, it's actually better what we've got on some of the businesses that back up to Genie Lane now.
Yeah, I can see that, making that intersection of Genie Lane easier and better, if somebody's going in, not making them get on Genie to go in, then go ahead and get out of the way.
That's exactly the point, Mr. Chairman, appreciate that.
And you mentioned the signalization, where again, Kevin? I'm sorry. It wasn't at Needham, but at Milestone?
It's going to be at Milestone Trace and Genie Lane and Old Nashville Highway.
With what we're doing in Sam Ridley, and I know Mike and Tom, I think it's still, yeah, with what we're doing at Sam Ridley, aren't we kind of blocking off some of these cross intersections in the future, and going to signal intersections?
Yeah, we are, there are, I think, one at Jim Parker, and a couple of their unsignalized intersections along Sam Ridley, we are going to be removing those crossovers, they just have a high potential for, they show a higher crash rating along those, and those are going to be removed, and just going to have the signal.
And so Needham going on to a little private, small access road there, really no need, and you're not going to get them doubled up there anyway.
It's going to create more...
It would create more of a problem. I guess I'm asking if they're coming out of Lot 1, it'd probably be better served taking the access over to Miles to come out to the light, to come out to signal. This is going to be a pretty busy intersection here.
Sure it is.
Which one do you plan that?
The Old Highway intersection will be modified, but...
Needham, Needham and Old Nashville?
Yes.
They have their proposal there.
Should we be signaling there?
Yeah, because they stack up. That was the next question, is there, is, there's no signal for Genie, right?
There's not a signal for Needham, no. There's an improvement there.
There is one.
Yes.
On Genie, yes.
Genie, yes, and Milestone.
Okay, all right, that clarifies it for me. Just a question, when this begins to develop, if you sell or have a buyer for a convenience location right there on the corner, at what point will we start seeing improvements at Old Highway and Genie?
The plan at this stage is late fall and into early next year.
Because it's a quagmire right there anyways.
And, so, anyway, we're, we got, we have people that's eager to get there.
Oh, we're eager for them to get there, believe me, so...
So what you're saying, that the road improvements on Old Nashville would be simultaneous with any of this development that we're...
That's correct, because actually, our contract is in, with the convenience store, is, is that, all of that goes down, that that Genie Lane and those improvements will be made first, and they have to be in place and everything.
Hypothetically, if your contract with the convenience store were to not come to fruition, and something else...
They're under contract.
Okay, that's all I needed to know.
We're moving.
All right.
I have a question about the intersection at Needham and Old Nashville Highway. Can I go through that intersection as it is currently today? What's going to keep people that are going towards Sam Ridley on Old Nashville Highway from not stopping in the middle of the intersection if there's no traffic light there?
Okay, I'm a little bit confused, Mark, where you're, if Needham doesn't interact...
Genie Lane, Genie Lane and Old Nashville Highway.
Okay.
Going towards Sam Ridley.
Right, it backs up, yeah.
On Genie Lane, I mean, on Old Nashville Highway, when they get to that intersection, what's going to keep from staying out of that intersection when the traffic backs up to it?
It's, there's a light proposed there.
Oh, I just thought there was no traffic going to be there.
No, it's at Needham Drive and Sam Ridley.
There's two lights proposed.
Which guy?
One at Milestone, one at Genie on the right way.
Genie and Old Nashville Highway?
Yes.
Okay.
And then...
And it's Milestone and Sam Ridley, but not Needham and Sam Ridley.
Okay, gotcha.
The proposed private street, should it even be on there, if they're going to do away with those crossovers? Because you're going to have light above it.
Well, there's an existing, there's an existing crossover at Needham now, I don't, they're not proposing to get rid of that. They're proposing to add one at Milestone, but they're not proposing to get rid of the crossover at Needham.
Which the state's going to determine that.
Right, that's going to be, and a private street, I mean, these private streets will provide, you know, connection between these lots from one to another, that folks won't necessarily have to go to Genie Lane or Sam Ridley to get from Lot 1 to Lot 4, you know, if they want to go there, so, it's kind of like a, almost like another frontage road.
A little access road, right?
Right, so...
Well, the, the convenience store is actually putting in access drive from Lot 1 to the private drive, so that they have, that gives them that downside access to their lot from there, and that's the reason that that side is important, to be able to get in at that stage, allowing them to go so far back to that, to where the other drive is. And we met with Tom Rose and one of the Department of Transportation representatives on site back in March, and discussed and kind of walked through this, because we, in our original traffic study that we did, after Tom and him had shared the one that the Town of Smyrna did, that we understood what was, you're trying to accomplish down there, where the target is, in that Cheney Drive.
This sort of mirrors that, doesn't it?
And that was the reason, that was the reason we went back after that meeting that we had, and moved that traffic signal in that milestone, to get the same spacing on that, like you would have from the industrial back to where you're going to move Cheney back to Potomac, and that was the reason that we moved that back. But we still need that other, at least, getting in, or right, right in, right out at, at Needham Drive on that side. And we're fixing it so that, actually, if you come out of Needham Drive, then you, you basically, we're trying to avoid that conflict on the other side of Needham Drive, somebody turning a left across the road, so, anyway.
And essentially, everything we approve here concerning roadway has to be approved by T-Dot.
Anything on the Sam Ridley side, the Genie Lane, Old Nashville Highway, that's all Smyrna, but anything on Sam Ridley, does have to be approved by T-Dot.
This adds what, three or four lanes to the interchange there?
Just one lane.
You got, going, you're talking about on Old Nashville Highway?
It adds four lanes.
You got a double left turn, two straight through, and a right turn.
It's adding four lanes.
And then, and then you got two lanes going the other direction.
That's right. Okay. Other questions? We have a mo- We have a motion.
Move to approve with staff comments.
Do we have a second? I'm not voting on this one. Any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion, motion carried.
Thank you, sir.
Site plans, B and B Auto Sales, staff comments.
This is a proposed site plan for PVB Auto Sales Building Edition, which would be comprised of a nine thousand square foot building addition. This lot consists of one point two nine acres located at three seven five South Lowry Street. Property is currently zone C two and proposed uses for a storage building for the sale of automobiles, which is allowed in the C two zoning district, being this lot has been grandfathered in since the recent addition of the C five zoning district. This property also lies within the Lowry Street overlay district. Now, the property is bound to the north by an apartment building, to the east by Pinto Drive, to the south by Advanced Auto Parts, and to the west by Lowry Street. Surrounding zoning consists of R six and C two. As proposed, the site may be accessed from an existing Ingress Egress on Lowry Street and a new connection onto Pinto Drive. Square footage of vehicular use area, existing twenty thousand one hundred nineteen, and they're proposing for an additional nine thousand three hundred and forty-six square foot, which require square footage of open space landscaping of two thousand nine hundred and forty-six square foot, they're proposing for three thousand eighty square foot. Total parking requirement of fifty spaces, and they're proposing for a total of sixty, sixty-three with an addition of eighteen. Handicap spacing requirement of three spaces, and they are proposing for three spaces as well. Landscape plan includes, includes a variety of trees planted on the north and south property lines, shrubs are proposed to be planted around the perimeter, around the building addition facing Pinto Drive and the property line bordering Pinto Drive. Currently, the landscape plan does not meet the Lowry Street overlay requirements as proposed, and I'll discuss that, more of that later. Design review, architecture elevations show the building elevation facing Pinto Drive to be faced with brick. The other three elevations, north, south, and west, are to be comprised of EFS material. The property is not located within the hundred year flood plain, and future land use plan identifies proposed site as suitable for commercial development. A handful of standard comments as well as grading plan comments and staff comments as well. Staff comment one has been revised to show fire hydrant within four hundred foot of all points of the building, or if the building is sprinkled, then the, the fire hydrants can be located at least six hundred foot away from the building. Staff comment two, if maintenance is performed in the building, an oil grease separator is gonna be required. Staff comment three has been revised in a way, original comment was to update landscape plan to meet mixed use corridor of Lowry Street overlay. Part of that is to add an additional street tree that is gonna be required along the frontage of Pinto Drive. Currently, as it's shown, there are only shrubs that are along the part, between this parking space and Pinto Drive, and a street tree is required per Lowry Street overlay. Additionally, the landscaped area between the parking area and Pinto Drive, as I just said, where the tree must be added, that must be at least five foot in width to meet the Lowry Street overlay. And staff comment four has been addressed with the building material being switched over to EFS. And staff comment five, to update the dumpster enclosure to meet designer view or remove the existing enclosure if no dumpster is gonna be used. All things considered, staff would recommend approval with the comments, as it.
Questions? Have a motion?
Move to approve with staff comments.
Have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion, motion carried. Zoning ordinance amendment, staff comments.
This was an amendment that we had kinda worked on and wanted to present to you, kind of in relationship to the, one of the rezonings we had earlier, and based on the discussion, I may know where this is going, but anyway, I'll present it anyway. The zoning ordinance amendment, again, is, is a text amendment to the ordinance regarding automobile detailing and car wash. Currently, that is listed as an automotive service and repair use. When we changed our ordinance recently to add the C five district, that fell, I meant, that fell under that same requirements. And this, tonight, as well as another potential user had, has talked to us about wanting to do some, a type of, that type of use in areas zone C two. And so, we had, our thinking, I guess, looked at it and thought that maybe this use is not specifically, it's not the, the automobile repair and service use we were thinking of when we changed our ordinance, and so, we thought that, thought that it might be worth a discussion to bring this forward to essentially move that particular use out of automotive service and repair and, and into the convenience commercial type of use, which would effectively, instead of it being just a special exception review in C five, would allow it by right in C one, two, three, four, and five, and then by special exception in I one and two. And so, that's why, that was the recommendation that I had made, again, this is something that's, it's a staff-driven thing, this is not something that if you had a request or anything like that, this is just something I, in reviewing the ordinance, thought this might be something we wanted to make the change, so.
But the way it's just in the commission.
Kevin, how would you decipher somebody that wanted to combine the two?
Sorry, combine the two?
Well, just, you know, car wash slash repair, car detail slash repair.
Well, if, if they, if they wanted to have, if, if you had somebody who had a car wash, but they also had some sort of other use that would fall under more under that automotive service and repair, then they couldn't do that in the C two or whatever.
The. What if it evolves into that?
Yeah, yeah, and it's, I can see where you're coming from, also, in looking at it, you know, there's, we don't see it so much anymore, post gasoline stations.
Used to have a car wash.
Used to have a car wash, you know, you don't see that as much anymore, but certainly they did used to, and so if you had a gasoline, a service station type user, of course, a lot, many years ago, service stations also had service repair many times too, as part of their business, don't see that much anymore either, it's pretty much just the convenience store and the gas station, and not the, not necessarily the repair part of the use, but it used to see, more recently did see the car wash, now you don't see that as much anymore either, but if you had a gasoline station in a C two zone without this change, they couldn't have a car wash, without some sort of zoning change of some kind, so.
An exception.
Yeah, either a PUD or a, or zoning it to C five.
Right now, it's in five.
Right now, it's only allowed in five, and it's a special exception review in C five, and so, you know, that's why we, I made the recommendation, to me, this is not, this isn't a tire shop or a transmission shop or whatever, it's more of a service to wash your car.
It's a laundromat for cars.
It's a laundromat for cars, it's a service, not a, it's not a, it's not a repair business of any kind, or, or servicing the vehicle mechanically in any way, or anything like that, body shop or painting or anything, so, it's just cleaning it, so.
Would there be a lot size requirement?
There would not be specific, well, I mean, it would really bust, as is recommended, is it would, it would change it, it would be based on whatever the zoning district is in, I mean, because this would, this is not just, as is proposed, it would actually cover more than just C two, and if we wanna look at something different, we could do that. How I've drafted it, it would not, but if we wanted to say, say we wanna allow it in C two, but not necessarily all the other zones.
I'm thinking of the very thing that came up earlier, is, you know, automatic car washes like that, that on a nice day, you know, it's, it's like, you gotta have some size there to manage that.
And if you want, I mean, we could, we could look at other options, this, this was one way of doing, if you wanted to allow it just, maybe just in C two or something, not a C one, three, and four.
Are, are there any currently that you know, like a detailed place that would have?
Well, there's several around town, and they're all currently grandfathered, non-conforming uses, 'cause they're all, pretty much, everyone I can think of anyway, they're all in C two, that are, I mean, we mentioned one on Needham, the corner of Needham and Sam Ridley, there's, there's several around town, either attached to a gas station or a standalone, automatic or standalone, where you get out and spray it yourself, kinda.
Little garage, wishy-washes.
Yeah, so, I mean, there's several, and everyone I can think of, at least, off the top of my head, are all in C two. You know, I don't think we've got any in C three, I don't believe, certainly not C four or C one.
That's probably the zoning at the time, too.
It was allowed, it was allowed, certainly, just like any of the other uses that we removed from C two and put in C five, it falls under that, so. We can come back with it, if you all aren't comfortable with this, we could come back with a different recommendation, again, this is a staff-driven thing, so we can, we can come back.
I'd kinda like to see it studied a little deeper and just, you know.
And, and looking at it, just in specific zones, or a minimum lot size or something like that, we could look at that.
All right. Yes, sir.
My name is Jeremy Hall, I live at one oh nine, Aaron's Chris Boulevard, Hermes, Tennessee. I'm the, one of the owners of Wash and Roll, and about eight years ago was the owner and developer of Super Speed Wash there on Needham. I just wanna talk a little bit about the newer technology, I kept comparing to Lake Smith Brothers.
What, what we really need you to do is submit the information to staff and let, let them pass it along to us. Technically, this is not a public hearing.
Okay.
And don't mean to be rude or cut you off, but if you would submit that information to them, then they can pass it along to us, if you would, please, sir. Thank you very much for your understanding.
If y'all would like, we, you don't have to take a vote on this, again, there's no, there's no applicant asking for this, so if y'all, if we want, we can come back next month.
I'll be fine.
Okay.
Shall I have one review?
We only had one this month, Liberty Hills, section two, there's seventeen lots, there are, there's seventeen, out of the seventeen lots, ten are built, two of those being, two of the lots are actually the, the existing homes that are already there, and then there's eight, if they're under construction or in completion. This is on, pretty much everything is done, other than some, 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 a few repairs that need to be done. Developer did request an extension, wanna get a little bit more built out and, and have those more to that seventy-five percent type level, and then, and do everything, all the repairs that were needed at that time. So they did request a one-year extension, we've only had just one year, and we would also recommend that extension is allowed.
Okay, not voting on this one.
Move to approve the bond review.
Have a second?
Second.
Motion and second, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Sit down.
Motion carried. Any other?
Don't have anything else?
Stand adjourned.
Do you have anything?